Recording in progress.
All right. Welcome, everybody, to the first meeting of 2025 of the San Rafael City Council. Today is Tuesday, January 21st. We normally meet on a Monday, but as yesterday was a holiday, we're meeting today. I'll request the city clerk to call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Present.
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Yarandz Galati.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present. All five of us are here this evening, so Happy New Year to you, whether you're here in person or watching online. We are glad that you are here. We like to start our meetings always appreciating city staff, what they do day in and day out for our community. They are true professionals. I'd say the best in Marin, and we're fortunate to have them here at the city. So, as I've mentioned in previous opening remarks, San Rafael does not exist in a vacuum, and events that happen throughout the state or the nation are felt deeply here. We're all deeply saddened by the wildfire devastation in Los Angeles, and we'll have an update later in tonight's meeting about what steps are being taken here to prevent a similar tragedy. In addition, yesterday, a new federal administration begins their term, and there's concern about how new policies might impact the work that we're doing here in our community. I want to assure you that all of us in the city and here on the dais were committed to continuing our collaboration with residents around our four identified policy areas of climate resilience, economic vitality, housing and homelessness, and social justice. We look forward to our continued work together. And before we get to our business agenda, we also include a land acknowledgement in addition to the work that we do on a regular basis with the tribe. We thank the original caretakers of this land. San Rafael is traditionally home to the Kosmewak people, many of whom today are tribal citizens of the Federated Indians of Great Ranche Ria, and we honor their continuing involvement in stewardship practices that benefit us all. I'll turn to the city clerk. She'll describe how people can participate this evening. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Tonight's meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube. Members of the public wishing to provide public comment displayed on the podium and the projector is a timer to help you stay within your two-minute timeframe. You're invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you live in or if you're from outside of San Rafael. We do offer closed captioning for this evening's meeting on Zoom. You can select a live transcript button on Zoom to enable this feature. Community members may request reasonable accommodations to provide public comments virtually, and for more information about that, or if you experience any technical difficulties, you can email me at city.clerk@cityofsanofel.org. Thank you.
Thank you. I will turn to the city manager for her report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm going to actually turn it over to our city attorney just for a brief moment.
Good evening, Mayor Kate, members of the council, members of the community. I appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight for a single purpose, which I'm absolutely delighted about, and that is to introduce to all of you and our community our new Chief Assistant City Attorney Andrea Vizveshuara, who is present here with us tonight. I've asked Andrea to be here. She can approach the podium and say hello, introduce herself, and then I've also told her that she is then relieved from duty for the rest of the evening because she'll have an opportunity very soon to be sitting here in my stead, I'm sure.
Welcome.
Yep.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to serve the city that I call hometown, and I'm really excited to be a part of city staff. I've heard such great things about both staff and council, and I'm really excited to start working here. So, thank you so much.
Thank you for being here. Welcome.
Welcome.
Thanks.
So, I have a few remarks that I wanted to make in context of the presidential transition in particular. So, the city recognizes that many people in our community right now may be feeling uncertainty or concern about the recent transition at the federal level and potential policy changes. I want to assure all San Rafael residents that the city of San Rafael, including the mayor and council, the city manager, and the San Rafael Police Department remain steadfast in our commitment to serving and supporting the entire San Rafael community. A key responsibility of the San Rafael Police Department is to foster trust and build meaningful relationships with all members of our community. This includes every individual regardless of their nationality or immigration status. The department's mission is rooted in ensuring public safety and delivering equitable services to everyone. It is the policy of the San Rafael Police Department that all law enforcement officers make personal and professional commitments to enforce the law consistently and free of bias. Confidence in this commitment will increase the effectiveness of the police department in protecting and serving the entire community, recognizing the dignity of all persons regardless of their national origin or immigration status. As a matter of policy and practice, the SIS San Rafael Police Department does not engage in immigration enforcement activities, including collaborating with federal immigration officials on investigations, interrogations, detentions, or arrests related to immigration status, unless required to do so by any future federal legal mandates. San Rafael remains committed to being a welcoming and inclusive city. Also wanted to mention tonight that we have some opportunities, some volunteer opportunities to serve on the city's boards and it's actually committees and commissions. We have a few vacancies. One seat on the Pickleweed Advisory Committee. There's a seat on the Planning Commission and the Voter Approved Tax Oversight Committee. So, if you have any questions, you can email Lindsay Lara, the city clerk, at city.clerk@cityofsanofel.org, and you can fill out an application online at the San Rafael's website, Boards and Commissions website. We also have nominations open for the 2025 Public Service Award for the city. So, those are community members who make San Rafael an amazing, wonderful place to live and work. The winner receives a $2,500 award generously from the Marin Community Foundation and a recognition at the city council meeting as well as the State of the City Dinner. So, those nominations are also online at the city's website, due by February 3rd. So, encourage to spread the word. A few events coming up on January 28th from 6:00 to 7:00 over Zoom. The city's parking permit program is having a community meeting. This is a project that's happening in East San Rafael right now. There will be Spanish interpretation at that meeting. You can find more information about that, about the Zoom online on the parking website, the city's parking website. There's a second annual Lunar New Year celebration coming up. It's a, the event is called a Snake Hunt and Word Scramble Challenge. I don't really know what that means, but the encouragement is to go downtown to local businesses and find out. It starts on the 24th, January 24th goes to February 24th, and there'll be gift cards announced the first week of March. It sounds like it will be fun. There's also going to be some dance performances at the Yetwa Restaurant on Fourth Street on February 1st, 2nd, 15th, and 16th. I also wanted to make a special recognition to the San Rafael Fire Department for supporting the fires in Los Angeles. I am going to have Chief Roman come up in a few minutes to speak about our preparedness and readiness for wildfire here in San Rafael. I especially want to recognize the four individuals for their service at the Eaton Fire. So, that would be Captains Nick Juisty and Garrett Northern, and firefighter paramedics Matt Lewis and Nick Crouch, who are home safely and we're grateful for their service, as well as the sacrifices made by the rest of the department while they're down there doing their part. So, on that note, I'll turn it over to Chief Roman to come down and offer some adequate Gardner.
Good evening, Mayor Kate and council members. Excuse me. As California is facing increasingly devastating wildfire events driven by climate change, the San Rafael Fire Department, in collaboration with city leadership, remains steadfast in its commitment to taking proactive measures to safeguard our community. We're entering a new era of catastrophic wildfires. Fire seasons are longer, wind-driven events are more frequent, and the scale of destruction continues to grow. In this evolving landscape, adaptation is not optional. It is essential. Building fire-resilient communities and ensuring our firefighting resources are adequately prepared requires strategic investments into infrastructure, training, and preventive measures to mitigate risk before fires ignite. I would like to take a moment to commend the extraordinary dedication of our firefighters currently in Unit 654. As Christine just said, is deployed at the Palisades Fire, contributing to critical firefighting efforts. We also recently welcomed Unit 52 back home from its service at the Eaton Fire. These deployments highlight San Rafael's department's unwavering dedication to supporting firefighting efforts across the state while ensuring safety within our community. This level of service and readiness would not be possible without the continued support of our city leadership and the community. Your commitment ensures that our teams remain well-equipped, prepared, to protect lives and property both locally and beyond. Our thoughts are with those currently enduring one of California's most destructive fires in history. San Rafael has a longstanding commitment to wildfire prevention and preparedness. Notable milestones in 2007, the adoption of the original Wildland Urban Interface Vegetation Standards, which were further expanded in February of 2021. 2017, following the North Bay fires, the Marin County Board Supervisors convened a subcommittee to study lessons learned leading to the grand jury report in April 2019. In 2018, under the city council's direction, the San Rafael began developing comprehensive community-wide approach to wildfire reduction. This process, which involved extensive community input, resulted in the creation of a 38-point wildfire prevention protection action plan, formally adopted in August of 2020. And in March of 2020, voter approved of Measure C, which provided critical funding for wildfire prevention initiatives. These investments have enhanced evacuation routes, improved warning systems, supported the creation of defensive spaces, advanced home hardening efforts, and expanded fuel reduction zones. However, recent wildfire events remind us that ongoing for vigilance, collaboration, and continued investment. Preventing catastrophic fires, damage like experienced in Paradise, Lahaina, and now the Palisades, require a collective effort. Every homeowner has a role to play. Together, we can create fire-adapted communities that enhance San Rafael's resilience to wildfires and mounting challenges posed by climate change. At this time, I'd like to invite Deputy Director Quinn Gardner to provide the brief update on our 38-point plan and the playbook.
Thank you, Chief, Mayor, and City Council. I first want to share and echo the sentiments of gratitude to our first responders and compassion for our neighbors to the south and everyone that has been impacted by worsening wildfires in our country and around the world. I also want to extend my gratitude to you and our voters for their commitment to preventing such a devastating wildfire in San Rafael and Marin County as a whole. As you know, we're five years into implementing our 38-point wildfire prevention plan, supported by the parcel tax the chief mentioned. Of our 38 points, we have now completed or made significant progress on 34 of those points. Much of this work is ongoing and will never be completed. As vegetation grows back, public education and education opportunities abound, and we are constantly learning and applying lessons learned to improve our community's safety. Our approach is focused on three main layers of protection. First, preventing the fires. Two, keeping the fires small. And three, assuring we can protect lives and property should a large fire occur. I'd like to touch on each of these and highlight some of our progress. First, preventing fires from starting. We do this largely through education and encouraging all of our community members to make smart choices like not mowing during red flag days and assuring they're preventing those ignitions. We have strategic vegetation management, such as along our roadways and in recreational areas. To date, we've treated over eight miles of roadways. That includes everything from trimming seasonal grasses to removing Italian cypress and removing and limbing eucalyptus. And we also work to eliminate ignition sources from our open space through our ranger program in partnership with our law enforcement. Second, how do we assure that fires that do start stay small? This, of course, requires a dedicated and well-trained fire department, as well as our law enforcement partners, to help us assure access and orderly evacuation should they be needed. We also developed a city wildfire playbook that provides consistent and adaptable guidance at the first signs of fire weather and through a potential event. Thanks to our partners and our community, we've improved our early detection capabilities, and of course, we keep fires small by reducing the amount of fuel available to them. This includes grasses and other fine fuels, large-scale vegetation management, and strategic fuel reduction zone projects, and work on private property, including defensible space. We graze over 150 acres in San Rafael. We've treated over 80 acres in open space, and we've removed vegetation along all 12 miles of San Rafael Fire Road. Excuse me. Fire Road management offers an important opportunity to create fuel breaks while also assuring our responders are safe should they need access. And third, how do we assure that should a large fire occur, we minimize the loss of life and property? Our focus is always on keeping our residents, responders, and homes safe. We have made evacuation route improvements, including safer and clearer parking lots and parking in front of recreational areas, roadside vegetation management, and conducting community evacuation drills. We continue to improve community emergency preparedness through education, training, drills, neighborhood response groups, firewise, and similar programs. And to this end, with the support of the mayor, we'll be hosting two wildfire community meetings, hopefully in early February, to provide a more detailed update to the public and offer more information on steps they can take to be prepared and wildfire resilient. We continue to support residents taking action to harden homes and create and maintain defensible space. To date, our inspection team has covered nearly every parcel in the city, inspecting over 17,500 parcels, amounting to over 8,000 acres. We've issued over $350,000 in residents' grants, mainly for vegetation removal, and we've helped over 425 homes through our direct assistance program. Both of these resources remain available to our residents. And of course, we continue efforts to increase emergency alert registrations and language access to those emergency alerts. As always, my plug to please sign up for Alert Marin at alertmarin.org, potentially changing to alertmarin.gov, I believe both currently work. Unfortunately, time and time again, we see fire deaths that could have been prevented with an emergency alert registration, evacuation plan, and/or early action. I cannot overemphasize the need for resident action and the support we have available to support people, particularly in achieving compliance with San Rafael Municipal Code 4.12, our citywide vegetation standards. In early 2021, city council approved our updated set for citywide vegetation standards, and to date, over 7,000 residents are fully compliant with these standards. Many more are so close with only small changes to make to improve their home and neighborhood's resiliency. We will continue to explore ways we can update our building standards to improve wildfire resiliency and look forward to May of 2027, when all shake roofs in San Rafael will have been replaced with Class A fire-rated roofs. And while all of this progress is worth celebrating, more work is needed. We continue to manage our public lands and look for new opportunities to collaborate with our environmental and land-owning partners. We will continue to invest in our city team to assure we can respond to wildfires and all hazards facing our community. We will continue to partner with our residents to help them be resilient and prepared. They need support to continuously find ways to adapt their homes and properties to wildfire. Our grant and direct assistance programs, as I mentioned, remain available. In the last few years, Marin and San Rafael have seen a few fires that could have been much worse if not for resident action and vegetation management. There was a slow fire moving through recently-treated open space that gave firefighters plenty of time to respond and safely contain it without needing to order a large evacuation. There was the fire that ran up the hill and stopped when it hit defensible space the homeowner had created, saving their home and preventing further spread. There were the embers that blew and landed in a recently-cut grass and put themselves out before firefighters even arrived. Our efforts are working, but our efforts must continue. We thank you and our community for their continued efforts and vigilance. And I believe we can take questions? Yes.
This is an agenda, so it's not a question-answer session. If the council would like to schedule this in the future, if there's a need, and talk with city manager, we can always put it on an agenda, but this was just by way of a, excuse me, city manager's report.
So, there will be a community meeting that Quinn referred to coming up, so that will be a great place for questions and answers.
You bet.
Okay. Thank you. City Manager, you finished your report? Okay. Thank you. I will turn to my colleagues for their reports. For meetings they've attended since the beginning of the year, I'll start with the Vice Mayor, Bushy.
Thank you. I attended a meeting of the San Rafael Sanitation Agency, where I was happy to report that the San Rafael Sanitation Agency was welcoming Supervisor Rodoni to our board. The meeting was notable for its brevity. We thoroughly discharged all of the duties in 31 minutes flat, so. I also attended a meeting of the Marin Transit Board. Many of the topics are going to be covered by the presentation later today, so this evening, so I will leave that. Other than to say that Marin Transit's primary focus of customers and riders is in our canal area, so it makes sense that their activities would be closely aligned with our Canal Transportation Committee. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Thank you. I attended the Homeless Policy Steering Committee focused on older adults, where we're continuing to look at the work of the grand jury report, as well as the county's partnership on addressing those issues. And I'm going to try to turn my update into not a question, but a statement. Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority, we had a number of meetings. Obviously, it's been a top topic for lately, for sure. And I do want to mention that at the last meeting, it was shared that there is definitely more attention now around Zone Zero. more attention now around Zone Zero, and how we can, as a community and as a county, really enforce, be able to get to the point where we can enforce a Zone Zero. So the fire chiefs are all working on that direction. Everyone could do that today, and we do, there are communities in the Bay Area, Woodside, and Maraga that are trying to move forward with a Zone Zero ordinance, and so hopefully that will also be something that the county can start to consider.
Could you just describe what Zone Zero is for those who might not know?
Zone Zero, correct me if I got it right, the five feet from your home to have clearance. So clearance of vegetation, any combustible items, so that's what's really, really important. And then also looking at, within your, right outside your exterior of your home, items that could be, that need to be addressed, and these are the ones that are identified in the inspection reports as high-priority items, which are obviously the roof, the vents, siding of the house, and fences. So anything touching the house.
Thank you, just in case people didn't know.
Did I get it right? I got it right?
Yeah. You got a thumbs up from the fire chief and Quinn. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. I have one meeting to report, and it was prior to the new year. I participated in a tour of the sanctioned encampment on the north part of Mahone Creek. Several of my colleagues were present for the tour. It was the second tour that I went on, and we thank our partners, the nonprofits that are managing the site, and for all city staff that have created the sanctioned site using county-acquired funds in partnership with the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Yarenz Gulati.
Thank you. So I was going to start with the same event that we attended, so thank you. Right after that, we had the Pickleweed mural unveiling, celebrating the completion of San Rafael's newest public art mural, which is called "The Peoples of the Canal", and this mural reminds us of the importance of representation and of being seen in the places that we call home. So for generations, immigrants have built this neighborhood with their hands, their hearts, and hopes. And at the same time, we were also, this mural also honors the Coast Miwok people. They were the first people in the canal and in San Rafael for thousands of years, taking care of the land. So it was very exciting. Mayor Kate was there. Councilmember Kurtz was there as well. A huge thank you to Rich historic from the Canal Arts, the artists, the County of Marin for the funding, and also our Pickleweed Advisory Committee and our staff that they have really cooperated to make this possible. So looking forward to many more. I also attended the San Rafael Hispanic Chamber of Commerce annual Las Posadas celebration, so that's always a great event. And in January, it's been very much climate change actions. So I've been appointed from CalCities for a one-year term on the Environmental Quality Policy Committee, so I'll be doing that for this year. So I really look forward to being working at the state level and see what's happening around climate change actions. Also attended the Resilient Community, the Sea Level Rise Superstars closing event with Laurel Dell School. There were a lot of different partners that made it possible as well, Youth in Arts, the Berkeley, the UC Berkeley Link Program, lots of our staff, our sustainable team was there as well. Mayor Kate was there, and it's always so exciting to see when the kids, you probably saw it like in the entrance around Sea Level Rise and the different art projects that they created. So it was a great collaboration, and I was very excited. And finally, we had last week the CCAP quarterly meeting, which is the Climate Change Action Plan Committee, and it was very well-attended. In fact, I think we need to expand the room, because there was so many people. It was amazing. We had a presentation from College of Marine Sustainability Plan with Superintendent President Jonathan Elrich. We also had the Marine School of Environmental Leadership students presenting two different projects around Terralinda High School. The San Rafael Chamber Green Business Committee was there, talking a little bit about marine sanitary, their sustainability. Canal Alliance was there as well, presenting the Green Workforce Development Project and the Neighborhood Plan Update. And then, of course, our Sustainability Plan for the City of San Rafael, introducing the new Climate Justice and Engagement Manager, Carrie, I'm going to miss it, Carrie Fugat? Yes. So it was amazing having her there, and everybody was really excited to see everything that is happening around climate change. So that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am San Rafael's representative on SMART, the Sonoma-Marin Area Rapid Transit. We had a meeting last week. We had a very long ridership report. I'll just give the highlight, which was December of 2024. The ridership was up 29% as compared to December of 2023. The goal for fiscal year 2025, so that's July 1 of last year through June 30 of this year, is to have 1 million riders, and we've already hit 52% of that goal. So continue to see ridership growth. If you're interested in getting involved in SMART, we have an ad hoc committee that has been ongoing that is a citizen oversight committee, and there are openings available. If you're interested, you can apply by going to the SMART website and applying, so that will be coming up. And then, in addition to SMART, I was very busy last week having presentations. I had the Laurel Dell second graders in here. They had awesome questions, everything from my favorite color to what happens at City Hall during the day. It was amazing. I was honored to speak at the Chamber Leadership Institute, which is put on by the Chamber of Commerce, and it introduces folks to how policy is passed and decisions are made and community is built here in San Rafael. We have several members of city staff members who are participating. And finally, I was able to speak at the Montessori Junior High out at the St. Vincent's property. So already a lot going on, and one thing we'll speak more of at our next meeting, we are celebrating San Rafael's 150th year this year. And so there will be more events, there will be events and programs. And so at the next meeting in February, we'll start to talk about all the different events that are going to be happening over the year to come. So with that, thank you, as always, for what you do outside of the diocese work. Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Chief Roman and Quinn for your presentation. We will accept, I will accept any comments from the public on any of the reports that you just heard. If you're interested, come on down. You have two minutes. You're welcome to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you live in. Not seen any comments on the reports. I will bring it to the consent agenda. We have four items, from A through F. Are there any items that the council would like to hold? Not seen any. I will invite comments from the public on the consent agenda. If there's anything you'd like to comment on? Not seen anyone? Is there a motion on the consent calendar, please?
I'll make, oh, go ahead.
Still moved.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yarenz Gulati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 5-0. We have a special presentation this evening of the Marin-Sonoma Mosquito and Vector Control District, of which we also have a representative that sits on that board. So welcome. You can introduce yourself, and we're glad you're here.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor, City Council members, staff. Try to get this adjusted here. There we go. My name's Peter Bonkrud. I'm the district manager at Marin-Sonoma Mosquito and Vector Control, and I'm actually one of the newer employees there. So I was hired back in April of 2024. I did come to Marin-Sonoma with a little bit of mosquito control experience. I was running a mosquito and vector control district in Shasta County for over 15 years, and I've been a part of this industry for 25. So hopefully, I'll be able to answer all your questions today. Perfect. Okay, so might see a noticeable name there. So our district was started over 100 years ago, and San Rafael was actually the home of where our district started. So largely not for public health reasons initially, it was so that people could live in these areas and habitate. Mosquitoes were so bad that they couldn't stand to go outside. And so basically, they started to do different things that could help improve the area and reduce the overall mosquito load in and around the habitats. At that time, malaria started to become a bit more known and the cycles associated, and ultimately, most of the public health or mosquito-controlled districts became in-place post-malaria, largely for malaria control, which we haven't had in California since the 20s. So good news there. But after we got rid of malaria in California, we continued to focus on other mosquito and vector-borne disease issues, and we've annexed both counties now. We cover both Marin and Sonoma County, 2,300 square miles, and just under 770,000 residents are covered by our district. So who are we? We are headquartered in Cotati, California, so not too far from here. We have 36 full-time employees, between six to eight seasonals that we bring on. We have 24 trustees or board members. We are an independent special district, so those board members are all independent special board members. Rika Gopanoff is your representative here at Marin-Sonoma Vector, and appreciate you guys making that appointment. Obviously, with 24 vacancies, it's not always easy to keep them all filled. It's not a well-paid position, but we still appreciate all those that come. It is volunteer, so that's, our budget is just around $12 million with capital improvement purchases. What do we do? So the name of the game is largely mosquito control. So we do public health mosquito and vector control. Within that, there's a variety of different ways that we do mosquito control. But in addition to the mosquito control, we also do ground-nesting yellow jacket control and rodent-borne disease control exclusion advice consultation. We don't do active trapping, but we do work with homeowners, property owners, renters to reduce the overall rodent loads that are on their properties or in and around their areas. In addition, we have a variety of school programs that we do throughout both Marin and Sonoma County, and you'll see some statistics later on. And then we also do insect identification. Myself and several others on staff are entomologists, so even though I work in a mosquito and vector control district, most of us did start in biology and entomology. What is integrated vector management? So it's a philosophy that we ascribe to at the district. When you look at all the detailed words and sentences and everything that puts together integrated vector management, I think what's most important to take away is that it's a toolbox. So every situation requires a different tool or a different set of tools. And so what we try to do is, based on the data that we're collecting, the surveillance information that we're bringing in, we find the right set of tools for every situation. And so when people ask us, you know, what do we use, or how do we do, you know, X, Y, and Z in terms of mosquito control, the reality is that every single situation might require a slightly different type of control strategy, whether it's education, whether it's biological control, whether it's source reduction. Each situation calls for its own slightly different prescription in terms of the efforts that we do to reduce the mosquitoes or other vectors. What types of mosquitoes are we worried about? So we're actually up to 23 different distinct mosquitoes. So for most people, it's the one they swatted last, but for us, there's actually a variety of different insects or mosquitoes that we focus on. The main ones, Culax tarsalis and Culax erythorax, to some degree, Culax pippians, those are the ones that are going to be transmitting West Nile virus, and those are the ones that we focus most our efforts on. So even though we have more than 20 species within both Marin and Sonoma County, our efforts are actually focused on around a half a dozen of them. And that's either because they come out in such large numbers, in the case of our salt marsh mosquitoes, or because they're a public health risk from West Nile virus, Western equine encephalitis, St. Louis encephalitis, some of the diseases we're concerned about. How do we do it? Well, so we have over 25,000 different sites that have been mapped throughout both Marin and Sonoma County, and they get inspected on a regular basis, anywhere from every seven to 10 days, to every month, to every six months, depending on the type of habitat, the type of source. So those 36 full-time employees are very busy about now, actually. So we've just started to see the seasons start to kick off. We're starting to see mosquitoes in our traps, and our technicians are transitioning from winter projects to getting out into the field and inspecting those sources to make sure they're not breeding mosquitoes. So a couple of statistics. I'm not going to take too much time. I know I have a small window here, and I want to allow some time for questions, but just look at all the variety of different things that we do. And I will highlight the 293 classroom presentations. That's a person that's doing that, so she's very busy, and she gets to as many classrooms as she can, and she has curriculum at all different grade levels with all the different types of vectors that we deal with. In addition, we get out to as many community events as we can, and again, try to get that message out about not only what we do, but what the residents can do to reduce the overall amount of either mosquitoes, ticks, rodents that they have, that they're encountering on a regular basis. We also have a lab. So in our lab, we're doing mosquito surveillance. We're collecting those mosquitoes, we're testing them for those diseases, in addition to the ticks that we're collecting and also testing for diseases. So they're processing birds, they're processing mosquitoes, both immature mosquitoes and adult, and basically making sure that they're not transmitting diseases. Good news, 2024, we had no West Nile virus in Marin and Sonoma County, which is fantastic. We always like to hear that, and it's unfortunately not the case every year. Statewide, we still did see West Nile virus culminating, unfortunately, 12 fatalities statewide. But overall, 2024 was a lower year for West Nile virus, not only in Marin and Sonoma County, but statewide, so that's good news. Unfortunately, one of the things that we're starting to see in Southern California, in addition to the wildfires, is the increase in Dengue. So locally transmitted Dengue, and I'll talk a little bit about it later, is a concern, one that we're keeping an eye on here in Marin County, but hopefully, one that we can keep out of Marin County. Tick testing, I'm not going to go too much into it, because I think there were some questions that people had about rodents, but we do tick surveillance, regular tick surveillance, targeting Exode specificus, which is the western black-legged tick, and we're looking for Lyme disease, namely. There's another disease that's also within those ticks, Borrelia miemotii, that causes a relapsing fever-type illness in humans, but the percentages are lower, and the human illness component is considerably lower than Lyme disease. So we tend to focus on these, but we can identify ticks to see if they're the ones that are transmitting Lyme disease in our area for the residents. We won't test ticks for residents, but we will test ticks that we collect within our surveillance activities. And rodents. So what do we do for rodents? So we have a full-time rodent specialist that also basically goes out to any place that we get a phone call from, a service request, and their whole focus is basically working with the property owner, the renter, the landowner, to identify ways to reduce rodents. So whether it's harborage, whether it's exclusion, they'll go around, they'll take pictures, they'll produce a report for those people, and then they can take it on themselves in order to do the control component. So whether that's hiring a pest control operator, or doing their own trapping, or some other form, we can even give tips on what types of control are the most effective. But ultimately, we're trying to teach those property owners, those homeowners, those renters, how to recognize areas that are going to be a higher risk for rodents, and ultimately to reduce them. Because of just the sheer sustained effort that rodent control requires, we really need the property owner or renter, whomever's there, habitating in the area, to be committed and connected to making sure that they're doing the exclusion, they're doing the trapping out, because it's just a constant effort. But we can give you great tips, we can even come back. And the good news is, our services are paid for. So we'll come on site, we'll do the inspection, we'll give you the information you need to make good, informed decisions moving forward, and hopefully, that will help reduce your overall rodent populations within and around your property. So here's one of our rodent specialists kind of inspecting an area and looking to see all the different holes. So inspect, identify, sanitation, basically getting rid of any of the food sources that are going to be around there, any of the harborage areas, whether it's foliage, whether it's trash, anything that's going to be, an attractant for those rodents needs to be removed, needs to be covered, needs to be closed up. Those are going to, things are going to go a long way from reducing those populations. And then the exclusion. So anytime somebody talks to me about, you know, they keep trapping rats, the first thing I always say is, well, have you done any of the exclusion work? And often, you know, you get kind of a glassy look, because exclusion is a strange word. But really, what we're trying to do is rodent-proof those homes, rodent-proof those buildings, basically making sure that if you're going to be actively trapping out rodents, you're not just creating a highway for the next group of rodents to come right in. And so that's where that exclusion component becomes so important, because if you don't do that, and you're only trapping, you're just going to continually have rodents moving into that niche that's been opened up by you trapping out their neighbor. Quick little image that just shows the common areas, but it's everywhere you'd think. It's doorways, it's quarter of an inch to a half an inch size hole. Basically, if they can get their nose in, they can get through it. You'll see it along pipes, you'll see it along foundations. I think I had, I thought I had some photos. But basically, you can go to our website, all this is on msmosquito.org, and you can get good advice as to areas that you can find within your property to reduce rodents. But windows, you know, basically all the areas where those small gaps exist, and then you have food and harborage, you're going to be attracting animals. Ground-nesting yellow jackets, so we just focus on the ground-nesting yellow jackets. If you don't know if you have ground-nesting yellow jackets, that's okay, call us, we can tell you whether you have ground-nesting yellow jackets, and whether we can come and remove those hives for you, or those nests. And then I already mentioned public outreach and education, trying to get out to as many places as we can, either through classic media or social. Quickly, talk about invasive mosquitoes. At the top, I talked about locally transmitted Dengue. These are the two mosquitoes that do it, so Adysegipti and Adysalbopictus. They're currently not in Marin nor Sonoma County, so fantastic there. But if you can see, I'm not sure which is my marker, but there's a lot of red around us, so Santa Clara, Alameda, Contra Costa, Solano. We're slowly getting encroached by areas that now do have Adysegipti. as of just in the last two or three years. And what we noticed is Aedes aegypti specifically, but also Aedes albopictus, moved up the whole state very quickly, like within a decade. And so the concern is Dengue will do the exact same thing. So right now, we're only seeing locally transmitted Dengue in the LA area. So East LA seems to be kind of the hotspot, but we're also seeing them in San Diego. And ultimately, wherever we have travel-associated cases of Dengue and those two mosquitoes, the potential exists for transmission, because Dengue is a human mosquito disease versus West Nile, St. Louis, Western equine is a bird mosquito disease. So humans are a part of the cycle for Dengue. And so that's where we get concerned with travelers coming back from endemic areas that have Dengue. And if we had those mosquitoes in our area, they could bite those people and ultimately transmit Dengue in our area. Some of the things that we're doing to combat is focusing on technology. We're a reasonably small organization for a twenty-three-hundred-square-mile area, and so always trying to figure out how to do more with less. And so we do things like 3D printing. So our Dr. Fury, our lab director, is involved in basically making all of our traps for our mosquito district. It's a niche industry, so finding mosquito traps off the shelf is not always easy. And so she's come up with an entirely new design that's efficient, that's effective, and we can print at our district in infinite amounts, barring availability of the filament. So it's a unique way for us to be engaged in what we're doing, enjoy the science that we're so passionate about, and ultimately provide a better service for Marin-Sonoma residents. And then some of the other things that you'll see associated with invasive Aedes are the sterile insect techniques. You might see it acronym as SIT. But basically, there's three different types of sterile insect techniques that are being tested in various stages in California or nationally. Right now, because of invasive Aedes happening in Southern California and with the locally transmitted Dengue, a lot of those districts are focused on irradiated mosquitoes, so a very classic sterile insect technique that you might have heard of in agriculture, where basically they shoot X-rays at male mosquitoes so that they're no longer able to have viable young. They release those males out into the wild and ultimately reduce the populations. And Wolbachia and self-limiting mosquitoes are just two different versions of that same idea, where they're releasing males that can no longer have viable young. So that's it. I think I went a little over ten, but I did want to get through as much as I can, and I heard I was one of only two presentations tonight, so I took advantage of that. Hopefully, there's still time for questions.
Absolutely, no, thank you. I will turn to my colleagues to see if there are any questions you would like to... Okay, I'll start with Councilmember Hill.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I had one question. What is your coordination motion with public health agencies as a threat might emerge? How do you convey that to public health?
Yeah, so it really depends on what level, but we're connected with any of our local public health efforts that are happening at the city. Ultimately, most of our time is spent with the county public health, so with our health officers as well as their public health departments. So we're part of emergency response plans. We're part of planning for obviously mosquito and vector-borne-related public health emergencies, and then any way that we can provide help or assistance on any other public health-related incident that might be tangential to the work that we do. And then at the state level, we also work with California Department of Public Health, so they provide a level of oversight as well as connection with our local biologists out of Richmond that we work with regularly to identify kind of these statewide efforts, as well as to try to get funding funneled down to local levels so that people that are doing the work on the ground can get the resources they need to be effective. And then also nationally, I'm actually the South Pacific Director of the American Mosquito Control Association. So I cover basically Western United States, so California, Hawaii, Guam, Arizona, New Mexico, Nevada, four kind of the nationwide components of mosquito and vector control. So whether it's advocacy, or science, or just sharing information, those are kind of the different public health levels that we engage in, CDC as well.
That's awesome. And one more question, I think you alluded to it, but what is there? Is there a loose or a formal affiliation with all the Northern California vector control agents?
So there's a Bay Area or coastal group of mosquito and vector control districts that basically covers Solano, Napa, Marin-Sonoma, Santa Clara, Santa Cruz, Alameda, Contra Costa, all the way down to Monterey. And then there's those groups that are also segmented out throughout the California area. So we have a Northern California branch or a SAC Valley branch, Northern San Joaquin, Southern San Joaquin, and then Southern California.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Yurin Skolari.
Yes, thank you so much for the presentation. I always forget all the services that you provide, so this is a great reminder. My question is around pesticides, and I guess I'm thinking about three different areas. I have a lot of experience that I didn't want to have, working for a farm with rodents. I know that there is like a lot of rodents downtown, in the canal, around garbage, and then when you have like multi-apartments, and then when you have your house with your garden. So the three different types of places, and how do you... How do you deal with that? I guess, when do you decide to have pesticides to protect the wildlife?
So for rodents, we don't do any, we don't do any baiting, we don't do any pesticide applications for rodents. So the only time you're going to see pesticide applications from our district is for the mosquito side of things. In fact, we don't even do pesticide applications for ticks, because there's just not a lot of options that are available. But with rodents, we can work with the property owners, with the landowners, with the renters to identify products that are a bit more environmentally compatible with the area. There are products that are available. And frankly, snap trapping is one of the best ways to get rid of rodents, especially if it's indoors. They're effective, they still work really well, and you're not going to have any non-target issues, meaning it's not going to be eaten on by any of the wildlife in the area, potentially your pet, assuming, they even have ones now that are completely enclosed, so you can keep them from getting, the snap trap from getting somebody's nose or fingers if you have children. So there's great options, but from a pest control or pesticide standpoint, we tend to lean on the commercial side to do that and to find the right product choice for them based on, you know, what type of habitat they're dealing with, and also, you know, the different types of environmental impacts that they may or may not have in that area.
Great, thank you. So it's not, it's more like a recommendation or a regulation?
That's it. So in terms of what we do, we'll consult with the property owner, we'll consult with the Lisi, we'll consult with anybody that's calling for our services. We'll even provide reports, we can provide information, and literally walk through the property with them and ultimately give them ideas on things they can do to reduce the mosqui, I'm sorry, the rodents from getting into their house. And then if they choose to still try to remove those animals, they would need to contact either a pest control company or do it themselves.
Okay, that's great. And then I guess my second one around mosquitoes, I mean, I had, I was a very lucky recipient of your fish for mosquitoes. I wonder what's your view around bats, bats and bat houses?
Bats are great. We always encourage people that, you know, so what we would call conservation biocontrol, basically keeping those things that are currently or actively feeding on mosquitoes, part of our natural biota is fantastic, so we always encourage that. The one thing we do always mention for people that want to host bat boxes on their homes is just if you have children, if you have animals, be aware that bats are a rabies concern. So you have some sort of risk that you need to be at least knowledgeable about before you bring that onto your property, but they will eat mosquitoes. Unfortunately, they won't necessarily feed on mosquitoes in the defined area that we need them to. So ultimately, control still is normally required or needed in most areas, but they're fantastic, birds, bats, they'll all feed on mosquitoes to some level, and they're an important part of our control strategies.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you, and I just have one additional question. I think we've always think of West Nile and Dengue as diseases that happen elsewhere, so to think that they might happen here is really eye-opening. So are there things that homeowners can do around standing water? I mean, you talked about that you'll come out, but we already know that your inspectors are very, very busy. You cover a huge area. So what would you tell homeowners who have the same concern that they can do? That's pretty straightforward.
If it is a standing water issue, definitely call us, because we're going to know exactly what to put in, if anything, into those sources depending on the type of habitat. In terms of you as a person out in the world trying to protect yourself from getting any of these mosquito-borne diseases, truly the best option is repellent. So basically defending yourself against mosquito bites. So whether it's finding an effective mosquito repellent that you're going to put on and wear regularly, reducing your activity around dusk and dawn, which is when mosquitoes are going to be their most active, you know, dipping or knocking over any standing water they might have, if it's a kiddie pool or a flower pot, you know. We find when we go do these inspections that often the mosquitoes are coming very close, coming from a source very close to the people that are complaining. And so anything you can do to try to mosquito-proof your yard is going to go a long way. And then, like I said, anything you can do from keeping yourself from getting bit by a mosquito is fantastic. And ultimately repellent is really the name of the game there.
Thank you, Peter. So what I'm going to do is open up public comments, so you can take a seat for a moment, and there might be additional questions that come up from the public, or we might just have input, so don't go too far. So I'll open up the public comment on this item. If you'd like to share any questions or concerns, you don't have to raise your hand. You can come down, and you are welcome but not required to say your name and what part of San Rafael that you live in. And you'll have two minutes. And it seems like all this information is also available on your website, because there's a lot of good information there. Okay, yes.
Hello. Hi, my name is Jennifer Connor. I live in Peacock Gap. I live on San Marino Drive, and I have a home that looks directly out at the San Rafael Rock Quarry, the Brick Yard, and the Marsh. And I've lived in this home since nineteen-eighty-eight. And every year that we have lived there, until about the last three or four years, we have been inundated by frogs. The first year we moved there, my husband said, what are, I thought he said, what are all these moths doing on the windows? But it turned out there were hundreds of Pacific tree frogs. And until about the last four years, we haven't been bothered by mosquitoes at all. But we also have not seen any frogs for about the last three years. I've looked in vain for them. I don't know where they've gone, but I have seen the last year the airboats that the mosquito and vector control puts out on the marsh. They just did it a few weeks ago after the big rains. And so I'm concerned that we actually had a lot of mosquito control with the frogs. And I'm concerned and wondering what they're putting on the marsh and who is managing the marsh to make sure that all the ecosystem there is working properly. So yeah, that's, that's basically what I wanted to know about and want to let you be aware of, because I'm not the only one on our street who's noticed it. People have said like, we just don't see the frogs anymore, we don't hear them. It used to be deafening, so there you go.
Thank you. Okay. We'll see if there's any other public comment, and then I'll invite Peter to answer. Anyone else like to comment on this item? Not seen anyone, I'll close the public comment. Normally, staff would answer the question, but I'm going to have our expert, Peter, would go ahead and answer. So that's a great question, and you heard it, I don't need to repeat it.
Sure. Yeah, so with any natural systems, there's going to be ebbs and flows in the natural biota. So you're going to see big years of frogs, and you're going to see lower years of frogs. So the reality is that probably in two or three years, maybe even next year, the likelihood is you'll notice an uptick. So there's nothing that we put out in the environment that's going to have an impact on those frogs, nor will the airboat. I mean, the airboat has been in service for twenty-five, thirty years in those same habitats. So I, the reality is that there are just changes within the environment, and whether they're related to something in the marsh itself, water quality, you know, some other input externally into the ecosystem that's impacting the overall frogs, that's a potential as well. But again, you know, there's big years for animals and low years for animals. We see it even in our, in our industry. And you can point towards to some environmental exterior components that will influence that, but sometimes there's just low years and big years as well. And that would be my guess with, with the frog situation, without a bit more information.
Thank you. Yep, I have a follow-up question. Vice Mayor Bushy.
A follow-up question. So your district in the last three years has not made any changes to what it has been doing, but using the same boat, using the same type of mosquito control. So nothing has changed from your perspective?
That's correct. And in fact, I mean, just like I mentioned with the environmental systems going up and down, some years are big and little for us in terms of the effort or the work that needs to be done, the products that we're putting out. And 2024 was actually a bit lower year, as I already mentioned, because of some of the, the lower West Nile virus activity throughout the state and zero here in Marin and Sonoma County. So yeah, no, there, it's, there's been no change outside of just the seasonals or the year-over-year change that we sometimes see, notice within our operations generally.
Thank you. Thank you. Did you have an additional, not seen any other additional comments? Thank you for coming down. Oh, you have a comment. Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Councilmember.
So as a point of my testimony, I've called twice for yellow jacket control. Both times, someone came out within a day, was able to mitigate the issue with yellow jackets and answered all my questions super professionally. So just kudos for the level of responsiveness and professionalism. Just even before you came here, that was my experience. So anyone who's experiencing anything, give the Marin-Sonoma Mosquito and Vector Control District folks a call. They're very fast. Thank you.
I appreciate that, and I know San Rafael city staff's fantastic, I heard at the top of the meeting. So is Marin-Sonoma Mosquito and Vector Control staff. So we always love hearing that people are responsive, that we're coming out, we're answering your questions. And I would say the same, if anybody has concerns or, you know, like the question we had today about the marsh, just give us a call. We're more than happy to talk about those issues and hopefully provide some information that will help calm your mind about the products and the work that we do out in the field.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Not seen any. Thank you so much, Peter. We'll definitely refer people to your presentation and to the slides. Appreciate you coming down this evening. Thank you. Our next agenda item is a canal community-based transportation plan, and we're going to receive a report on it. I see DPW Director and Assistant Director are here. Welcome.
I thank you, Mayor and City Council, for having us here tonight. I'm April Miller, I'm the Public Works Director. I'm here to support Assistant Director Joanna Quoc on giving an update to the canal community-based transportation plan.
Thanks, April. Good evening, thank you for having me here tonight. We're going to start off with a quick background about our canal community-based transportation plan. We're here to give a mid-year update on this plan, which was approved in June 2022, and serves as a action plan to address mobility needs for lower-income communities, and would not have been possible without the assistance of MTC, Metropolitan Transportation Commission, and TAM, Transportation Authority of Marin. This plan was really a collaborative effort involving residents, community groups, and other transportation agencies. And these efforts, along with the results, which includes eleven transportation solutions, are documented into this plan. Here's a quick snapshot of the eleven transportation solutions, which we're going to jump into and talk about individually, along with the progress we've made. The first solution involves building a bridge connection for pedestrian bicycle access from Canal Harbor area to Third Street. The first initial step is to secure funding for feasibility study, which we were successful in doing as part of the Active Transportation Program Cycle Six grant. We secured about 1.6 million. And as part of our work plan for our department this year, we are going to be starting on the feasibility study, and we'll be releasing an RFP, Request for Proposal, to get consultant help later this spring, summer. Our second solution involves providing access or bike share and to the canal neighborhood for both adults, youth, including bike parking and educational classes. Great news that TAM launched the Redwood Bike Share Pilot Program last fall, and there are multiple locations within Sonoma, Marin, where there's new bike parking locations, two of which are in the canal neighborhood near Pickaway Park and on Bellum. For more information, we have a QR code on the Bike Share website, so please take a look. Our third solution involves improving comfort levels for pedestrians, bicyclists by implementing traffic calming and pedestrian crossing improvements. We're rolling, rolling this out in multiple phases and ways, including the high-visibility crosswalk striping that we did as part of the Pavement Management Program project. We've also highlighted a traffic calming project in Spinner Car Point, where we installed traffic circles and also carbon median extensions. We've worked with emergency services and collected community feedback to make some modifications to the layout of those striping and delineators. We're still collecting community feedback as part of our pilot project. And here's our QR code, which includes an online survey for anyone who wants to provide more information. And we're really seeking any feedback so that we can better the different measures that we're testing out, and anything... And the results of this pilot program will include measures that we're going to add to our toolbox that we can then implement throughout the neighborhood. that we can then implement throughout the neighborhood. This program, or this project was successful as a piece of our annual road safety implementation program that we're, that we started this year. And it also includes the Francisco Boulevard Midblock Crossing Project that we're implementing near the new Canal Lines Building. Part of this, part of the progress with the solution also includes the Canal Active Transportation Experience Project that we are also doing as this year's work plan. And we'll talk a little bit more about as part of Solution Six. For Solution Four, it involves bicycle and pedestrian crossing improvements, the gateways to the Canal Neighborhood so we can improve connectivity to the rest of the region. One of the projects we completed recently includes the Grand Avenue Cycle Track, which connects the Grand Avenue Bridge on Second to Fourth Street, which is our east-west bike connective connection. We've also applied for two separate grants this year. One is the ATP Active Transportation Program Cycle Seven and, oh, and RM Three.
Regional Measure Three.
Thank you.
For MTC.
Which would then connect our Grand Avenue Cycle Track to the Transit Center and then also close the North-South Greenway up towards Mission and Lincoln.
I'm going to go over the other, the other connection. So on the south side of the Canal Neighborhood in East San Rafael is Bellum Boulevard. And so the city has been working closely with TAM on the US 101 580 multimodal local access improvement project, which now includes Bellum Boulevard and improvements for bikes and pedestrians in transit along that key corridor in addition to potential improvements on the, on the highways on 580 and 101. And so recently TAM found out, we did a joint application with TAM on Bellum Boulevard to study and do further planning and design since Bellum Boulevard wasn't initially part of this project. So TAM needed additional funding to continue to study and design. So we received $2 million for the Reconnecting Neighborhoods grant that they just found out last week, which is really exciting. And then also there's another grant pending. We also applied for the Regional Measure Three for Bellum Boulevard. And that grant is an interim solution on Bellum, so improving bikes and peds now since the larger 580 101 multimodal project is, you know, 10 plus years out. And so we're looking at trying to do something sooner than later. So this section of Bellum is actually identified on the Bay Trail. So it's one of the really key parts. So we're hoping we'll find out in the next few months. So if we don't receive that grant, we're just going to continue to apply to grants to come up with some sort of interim solution to fund this project that's ranked in our top five citywide. So the art, so Transportation Solution Five, although an ambassador program has not been officially started as described in the Canal Community Based Transportation Plan with Marin Transit, there has been other items that have begun to address community concerns. And that includes as part of the 580 101 multimodal project, TAM created an eight-week transportation-based course to engage and educate a group of Spanish-speaking leaders and in the Canal Neighborhood in Woodland so that they could help advocate for projects using transportation terms in their community. And through this eight-week process, they came up with a list of requests to both the city and transit agencies and TAM and Caltrans on things that they saw and things that they learned. And so although it's not what the ambassador program specifically stated, it is a really good ambassador program that TAM has, has started. And so we hope to continue to use this group as part of all of our other planning studies that are going on in the Canal Neighborhood, including our, our precise plan with the PDA, also our citywide bike and ped plan. So we're really going to work with this group who understands the terms and can show us what improvements are needed.
As part of Transportation Solution Six, our goal is to improve pedestrian experience through sidewalk and streetscape improvements. We're going about this also as a phased approach. And some of the progress we've made includes securing funding for a Canal Active Transportation Experience Project, which includes upgrading curb ramps, sidewalk gap closure and expansion. And on the screen, you'll see an image of what Louise looks like currently. And it can be transformed to include a larger concrete, a wider concrete sidewalk in addition to the travel lanes. The project also includes upgrades to transit stops, bike boulevards and lighting improvements along with crosswalk enhancements. We're currently, we actually just received proposals for the design services on this project today. And we anticipate coming before City Council to recommend awarding the contract for designing this project pretty soon. Another item we've been working towards is the Canal Undergrounding Project. We've been coordinating with PG&E and to get it onto their work plan, PG&E's work plan. And with this project, we will be able to free up space for pedestrian access and also beautify the canal corridor. Another progress we've made is we're seeking funding for additional pedestrian amenities, trash cans and for tree investments.
Okay, so for Solution Seven is, this solution was based on lightings on commonly traveled pedestrian routes. So as part of the community plan, seven routes were identified in, in the Canal Neighborhood, four of which were addressed through collaboration with PG&E to install either add light fixtures to existing poles or replace fixtures on poles. And so we worked with, with PG&E and back in July of 2023, there's 34 locations shown on that map that where we added additional fixtures in the neighborhood. So of the other, since there were seven addressed and four, or four of which were addressed of the seven. And the other one, one of the other ones is at Pickleweed Park. And as part, as part of Pickleweed Park, we are looking at some lighting improvements as part of the park project that's currently under construction. The other two routes that were identified are going to be looked at as part of the, of the project that was in Solution Six, which was the ATP Canal Transportation Enhancement Project. And that includes, you know, reviewing whether or not the city wants to have lights along the Stark Weather Path. That's part of, it's a policy question. We need, that's, but we have grant funding to install lights along there. So that's going to be a question that'll come to the City Council in the future. And in addition, the city-owned portion of Bahia Vista Trail. So the city-owned portion is the other spot that lights were requested. So those, that's going to be part of this project that's kicking off in the next couple of months.
Transportation Solutions Eight through 11 involves improvements through transit agencies. And we've been coordinating with various transit agencies so that we can report out on the progress. Solution Eight and Nine involves transit bus stop improvements and maintenance. Marin Transit is in the process of upgrading six of their bus stops within City of San Rafael. One of them is actually a new one at the intersection of Midway Road and Francisco Boulevard East. They're anticipating to complete the improvements by spring of 2025. City Council also approved a new illegal dumping program that will be in effect. And then here are QR codes if you're interested in learning more about either of these items. Solution Ten and Eleven involves expanding transit service and transportation to schools in San Rafael. Marin Transit had reported peak hour service on Route 23 as was added over the summer of 2023. And they have extended the route to trips serving Fairfax Manor. Marin Transit and TAM are also seeking additional funding for future school service expansion. We are recommending that City Council accepts this informational report with modifications to the staff report as presented here. The modification involves clarifying Solution Three and its goals to widen corner boulevards along with tighter turn radii for vehicles. This concludes our presentation. Director Miller and I are available for any questions.
Thank you for your presentation. I'll turn to my colleagues. Vice Mayor Bushy, any questions?
Go ahead. Two questions. One, big picture and one more coordination. I'll start with the coordination one. Many of your projects involve other agencies and other entities. Have you been successful in your coordination efforts with them?
Yes, we have been successful. Yeah, this Canal Community Based Transportation Plan was, as Joanna mentioned, was sponsored by, by TAM. And we're, we're giving an update because it's in our community. But yes, we, we work closely with all of the different agencies. We meet with the transit agencies quarterly.
Quarterly.
Quarterly to coordinate on all of our projects, not just in this neighborhood. We've also, we also coordinate with, with TAM at least. Well, I'd say twice a month at least. So yes, we, we are successfully coordinating on all of our projects.
And to the community's benefit with efficiently and targeted projects for what the, what the community wants, which is a nice segue into the bigger picture. Are you, with, these are 11 solutions that we are focusing on. Do you remain satisfied that these are the biggest, the biggest and most important ones that we should be focusing on and that your strategic approach remains valid on a going forward basis?
Yeah, so, so this plan was created by the community. The community's input, these are their top projects. So only two and a half years into this plan, I still feel like these are the top projects for the community. However, Joanna, I don't know if we mentioned there, it's, it's in our report. But we do have the citywide bike and ped plan update that's coming up. And we just kicked that off. So there's going to be an outreach effort to figure out if there's more bicycle and pedestrian projects in this neighborhood and citywide. So perhaps there are more projects that come up in the area that will be on our, you know, on our work plan. But we know these projects are really important to the community. So these projects won't disappear. But there are other projects and there's lots of different opportunities to add projects to our work plan.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill, questions?
Thank you. And thank you for the presentation. Building on Vice Mayor Bushy's comments about are these the right things? Of the ones that have been completed, I recall in your presentation that you were able to take in feedback and do minor adjustments. But both either, sorry, I'll just say either quantitatively or qualitatively, how successful would you say that the projects that have been completed? How are, how successful are they? In other words, are we seeing more riders of the, say, the Grand Avenue Bicycle Track? Or are we getting feedback about the accomplishment of the projects?
Yes, several of the projects have just recently completed. So we haven't received a ton of feedback or on the data aspect of those. A lot of, and a lot of the projects are currently just in the design. So I don't know if we have enough data, but perhaps Joanna will want to.
Yeah, and I think Grand Avenue, for example, at least anecdotally, we've like received comments where people do enjoy the new cycle track. I think there are definitely tweaks that we're still trying to make to make it a little bit more user-friendly, like adding some signage and making sure people know how to use it properly. And I think with the Spinner Cur Point Traffic Calming Pilot Project, that's still ongoing. We anticipate we're, we're going to have like a monitoring process so that we can get quantitative data along with the qualitative with our online survey. And we're anticipating our reporting out our results maybe later in late summer or fall of this year.
So what I'm hearing is that with each project, there is built-in intentional time for monitoring and adjustment.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz, any questions?
Great report. It's great to see them all packaged together to understand the whole, the wholeness of it. I mean, it really is. Because there's so many areas that need to be addressed. And I'm, I can imagine the, what drove some of these? And it sort of ties into Councilmember Hill's comment about the sort of the data behind it, sort of what drove the solution? And was it accidents? Is it just general concern about safety? Is it those type of things? And if we're tracking actually those types of measures on these items? So that's one question. The second question is related to are all these projects, will we see all these projects again in our CIP? CIP. Capital Improvement Projects, thank you. So that's the second question. And then third is with these projects, I know that you've received funding in some cases, most, many of them for sort of the next level of research and work that needs to be done. Do you have sort of, I mean, it's so hard without knowing, really knowing, like what would be the band of cost of, is it zero to 10? Is it 10 to 50? You know, whatever it is, sort of a higher, like what do we know are going to be very high cost? Because I imagine majority of these will be needed in grant funding. And so, and of those, how, are any of these fully funded at this point? Or are all of them at some point of being funded? So those are my questions around that.
Okay, I'll try to answer those all. Okay, so you asked about what are we tracking? And so the Canal Community Based Transportation Plan, there wasn't necessarily data collected on why these improvements should be done. This is what the community feels are the most important projects, whether there's, whether they feel unsafe due to speeding cars or, yeah, so it's, it's, it's more of a feeling base. It's, it's, there's not data behind it. But there are projects that we can collect data afterwards to do, like, like Joanna mentioned on the traffic calming, to see if those are successful type of traffic calming measures that we could potentially use in other locations. So we have a way to collect data, but there wasn't a traffic studies that said, you know, Spinnaker needs, you know, traffic circles and extensions. It's just the community's like, yeah, it feels like people are driving fast. So we're trying some things out. So, so I don't know if that helps answer, like we're tracking separate things, but the plan wasn't created based on data. I guess our, our traditional data on, when we're looking at like the citywide bike and ped plan or other projects or our road safety implementation program, that's looking at different data, like our local road safety plan. And, and there's data associated with that. Will they be in the CIP? Not all of them will be clearly called out in the CIP. There are two projects that we listed that are in our current work plan that are in the CIP. A lot of these, these projects are smaller type, some of them have like smaller type projects that are as part of our annual programs. Like the pavement maintenance program covered, we slurried every street in the Canal Neighborhood in two years. So we picked up striping, like the enhanced crosswalks, different striping as part of that project. It wasn't specifically said that we're doing this in the CIP, just like our road safety plan. There's other things that are, like those smaller projects end up there. So it's not as, I guess, obvious. But we do have a, a Canal Neighborhood website that lists all of the even smaller projects and things that we have accomplished and highlights it. And I'm, I'm pretty sure there's a link in our staff report to that. So that's kind of where we're tracking it. We're showing it. It's just not necessarily in the CIP document. And the third item is the, the band of costs. So this, the Canal Community Based Transportation Plan did get a ballpark of what the planners thought some of these were going to cost. And some of them are funded. Some of the projects are, it's not really a specific project. It's just like improved sidewalks or something just more generic. But we have to figure out which sidewalks and get a cost and, and figure out how much it's going to be. And like the Active Transportation Program Grant we received on enhancing the transportation experience, we used, we went and looked at where sidewalks and crosswalks and curb ramps needed to be improved in the neighborhood. And we kind of did laundry lists, we worked with the transit agency, kind of came up with as many things as we could think of that needed to be improved and threw it all into one grant that we went after and we were successful in getting. So it's going to be miscellaneous all over for that one, is fully funded. Could we do more? Maybe, maybe. We'll see, like, we're going to keep evaluating and see if there's more projects that are unfunded. The bridge project is not fully funded. That project, we received funding for feasibility, preliminary design, environmental. The community plan says that that's going to be like five to $10 million project. It's probably closer to like 25 million. So as far as the, you know, the band of cost, it's significantly more. You know, once the feasibility study is done, whether or not we can do a bridge and is it feasible here, then we'll continue to seek funding to try to build that bridge.
Thank you.
Thanks for that thing. Thank you. Councilmember Yurant Galati.
Yes, thank you so much. This is so exciting because when, being able to come up with all these solutions based on the needs of the community, I think is so important. And seeing progress is so rewarding because many times we go to the community, we ask for feedback, and sometimes it's not possible to implement the solution. So I'm really excited about this, and I do have questions. And so I guess my first one is when we are doing some of the improvements, are we, I know that we have like the sea level rise planning is happening at the same time. So are we keeping that in mind? Or how are we doing in timing? Like if we are building, like raising some of the sidewalks? Are, can we raise it enough for sea level rise? Or is like, it's not possible if we want to get something done right away?
Yeah, if, yeah, if we're going to get something done right away, we aren't going to be able to address sea level rise with the projects that are currently in this plan. Because this plan, I mean, we would have to raise the sidewalks by, you know, three or four feet. And if we don't raise the whole road, then we end everyone's houses and we can't, we can't do it. So I would think that these projects are more like maintenance projects, like we're fixing all of the things that are wrong right now. And then eventually, yes, there's a sea level rise conversation. We are taking into account sea level rise. For instance, like in the San Quentin Pump Station, we want, made sure we had the pump capacity for when sea level rise happens. So we are keeping it in mind in like the bigger projects. But, and the bridge project will consider, you know, if the waters, you know, if and when, or when the water is higher, but like, you know, yeah, so we'll take that into account. But as far as most of these projects are just more, they're more like maintenance projects.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you. The other one is, I just confirm then that you mentioned the lighting along the Bay Path that does something that if we will ever do anything like that, that there will be like a huge community outrage to people. So they don't, because sometimes I get approached by people, you know, like, you know, upset that we are going to put lighting in there or no lighting in there. So just to reiterate that if we ever do any lighting in there, that we will go out to the community before.
Yeah, so currently our parks are just open from sunrise to sunset. So if we're going to put end dark weather path is considered a park. So it would be a policy decision whether or not we decide to light the path at any point in the night, whether it's just from like five to eight, just dusk for people to get home, or kind of what hours, or even if we want to light it. So yes, that conversation will, will be open to everyone to join in. It's going to happen early in the project because we do have funding to build lights on the path if we choose to do that. So yeah, it'll be, it's not a done decision. It's, you know, the policymakers need to figure out and work with the community and us on whether or not we want lights.
Great, thank you. Another question I have is with the, you mentioned PG&E funding. And I know that in the, I don't know if in the next two years or in the next five years, PG&E was, one of the projects was to bury all the power lines. So is that part of the funding they have right now to help improve, you know, the streets? Or is that something different?
Yeah, so the funding that you are referring to with PG&E is actually credits that was allocated to the city as part of Rule 28 for undergrounding. And we are in conversations, our project manager, Gray Melgarde, along with me and the PG&E representative are having conversations on getting onto PG&E's work plan. Because they also are working with lots of other agencies. And because we are doing a roadway project and we have secured grant funding for Canal ATE that's helped us get elevated in their priority list. So we're kind of next up on their group of projects. With that said, it's not until 2026. So we're working actively to make sure both projects can work together and are coordinated so that we're not, you know, we're being sustainable when we're building new infrastructure.
Yeah, that's fantastic. Thank you. Okay, I'm almost done. So I saw there is a new statewide parking law, the daylight law, where it's illegal to park within 20 feet of any marked or unmarked crosswalk. I thought this was like, probably like the newest nightmare for Public Works. So how are you addressing that? I guess in the canal, probably more because that's where we have the most issues around parking, but in general, and I know it's marked and unmarked. So I'm not sure if there is a plan to implement redlining or, you know, around that.
Yeah, we have a really good website up right now on the city website for, it's, the state law is AB 413. And yeah, so right now, so far, what we have done, we've, we've started with blocking off marked parking spaces because the law says that you can get ticketed in that zone, whether it's red curved or signed or not. Just if you're within that 20 feet or 15 feet, if it's marked or unmarked zone, then you can be ticketed. So we focus, since it's an unfunded mandate, we started with spaces like downtown. We bagged meters within those zones. And we're just blocking off those stalls until we can get around to either red curbing or signing on those. As far as the Canal Neighborhood, yeah, I mean, it's something that we're, we're definitely looking at. In some cases, we're able to shrink parking stalls, so they're just a little bit smaller on the ends. But, you know, we recently just did Ts and Ls everywhere in the neighborhood. So yes, there will be a loss of parking near marked and unmarked crosswalks. And that's just, that's part of our plan over the next, you know, six to nine months is to either decide to mark them or just sign it or, you know, just people can be ticketed.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I know, I saw that and I'm like, wow. After we did like all the Ts and Ls and now this is happening. So, and I guess my last one was around, I know that part of the plan, one of the solutions is that they shade trees, which I think is so important to try to mitigate a little bit the higher temperatures in the canal. So I know that we, in part of the, I'm not sure if this was specifically in the canal, but there was like a plan to do an inventory of all the, I can't remember, shrub? Shrub? Like green assets. So not just the trees, but all the shrubs and other assets too. So anyway, so I was wondering if that's part of this project or how we are doing around that one?
Yeah, so we, we drove all of the streets in the city and we collected information on the location of all of, of all of the trees citywide. So we now have that in our asset management software. And we're just now rolling out, rolling it out to city staff so we can start analyzing it. It takes a while to get all the software in place. And so then we can move on to our next steps on evaluating where we want to add trees and look at even, there's a few things that are, you know, on our list, like looking at either an urban forestry plan or some sort of, and we know our street tree ordinance is on the list. There's a bunch of things that are on the list, but we really wanted to figure out what our assets are. We did, I know we wrote it in the report, but we did apply for a big grant to try to, to plant a bunch of trees specifically in the Canal Neighborhood, you know, based on the assets that we, based on our asset management. And there's a few other things that were involved with that grant, but we were unsuccessful. We're going to try again this year on it, but it's, it's not the only thing we're doing. We're also kind of looking at the next steps and how we can work with the community. We're just working with digital services to figure out like how the community could help with our data. So we know that there's an active tree group who wants to provide feedback or help us with, you know, arborist reports or looking, kind of looking at, you know, what can be done with all the different street trees. So right now, we're trying to figure out how to share that data so we can get additional input and what we want to track. So we're still trying to figure that out with the software, but we're hoping in the next few months, we can at least be able to share that data.
Okay. Well, thank you so much again. It was a fantastic report and great work. Thank you.
Thank you. Great presentation. I just want to follow up on a question that Councilmember Kurtz had and just go a little bit deeper. And that was, so we adopted, this council adopted a local road safety plan. It was adopted at TAM, Transportation Authority of Marin Countywide, but we also adopted it here just so we can go after grants. So I'm curious about that intersection of that, which looks at KSIs, which are, what does KSI stand for? It's for ped car interactions, bad interactions, let's just say that. What the intersection of all that data, because that's been a priority of this council around Vision Zero. And how does that fit into this, which I understand is more granular and community based, but it does support kind of that bigger picture, so.
Yeah, the local road safety plan, I mean, there's, there's different measures in there also for traffic calming and stuff. But the data, I guess our High Collision Network, if you look at the report, is mostly like downtown, up Lincoln Avenue, Bellum, I think is on there. There might be a few streets in North Santorfelle, but it's mostly in the downtown area where like our High Collision Network is. So we could use some of the principles that are listed in that plan to apply to different areas in the Canal while we're designing projects. And I know that TAM is going to be looking at that when they look at Bellum Boulevard. But as far as like grants we've applied for from that local road safety plan, we applied for a grant on Lincoln Avenue, which has a lot of the different intersections that are listed in our High Collision Network. That grant and some of the other grants are very data focused. Like you have to meet certain criteria, certain number of collisions, certain measures that you're doing per intersection that directly will reduce those collisions. And we don't have any of those identified in the Canal Neighborhood for that, for those specific funding sources. There are other, there are other, there are a lot of other funding sources we can get that we've been successful in getting money for the Canal Neighborhood. But I guess the ones specifically in the local road safety plan are more around downtown and where our collisions are higher.
Okay, so we can, I understand about the grants and going after the funding. And we can use that data that exists to layer it on top of this. Because what we want to be able to show is holistically across the city, we are reducing KSIs, which I now remember stands for, I think it's kill and serious injury. I didn't make that acronym up, it's awful, but because that is a priority. Okay, no, that's helpful. And we do understand that this, because it was, it came from the community, that it wasn't a traditional where city has a plan and then we apply it. So we know that we're trying to have you knit together different plans. But I think what you're hearing from the council and by their questions is the support of doing that, be it sea level rise or around the other networks that are out there. Fantastic. Well, there might be other questions that come up from the community or from the council. So I will open up the public comment on this item. If you're interested in providing comment or have questions about the Canal Community Based Transportation Plan, you are welcome, but not required to say your name and what part of Santorfelle you live in. Welcome.
Thank you. Welcome. My name is Dave Mariotini. Been a resident of Santorfelle for 10 years this year. I'm all for pedestrian and cycling safety and new roadway safety programs. I'm a cyclist, and this is more of a comment, but there might be a question that comes out of it. As a cyclist, I've noticed some really nice improvements to bike lanes, specifically that where the Miracle Mile kind of merges into Fourth Street there. We kind of took out some of that Rockway hillside. Great job. But I've noticed that with, cyclists call it road furniture. It's just these tubes, these plastic safety things that are installed. When these are installed, does the, I've noticed that they collect leaves, debris, trash. It's almost like if you think of an artery flowing with blood, a roadway flowing with cars, bikes, pedestrians. These things that we build tend to attract trash. My only guess is that city-owned street cleaning equipment, street cleaning machines can't get in and out or navigate successfully through them. Has Public Works decided or thought about how we're cleaning those curbs and sidewalks? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Yeah.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Hal Viteri. I live in Gersel Park. I enjoyed your presentation. I have a few questions. I seem to recall the bridge project coming up a few years ago and being shut, shut down. And I don't remember why, I thought there was some difficulty in putting a bridge across the canal, which is, I think, what you were suggesting. So maybe something has changed. So my question is, if something's changed, what was it? I take the bus, I enjoy the bus, and, but what I miss is bus kiosks. It would be nice when it's raining to have a little kiosk to sit in. So I don't know if your plan includes those, and if it doesn't, I would ask that you do. Walk around a lot, I enjoy walking around the community, get exercise. And I do walk around the canal and I notice that there's a, I think it's a popular activity by which people sit in their cars and they drink Modelo beer and throw their empties into the, into the streets. So I don't know if that's a feature of the community that's missing, giving people a place or a garbage can to throw their garbage in, or an area where they can enjoy themselves quietly sipping some fine beer and enjoying the evening. So I don't know if that's included in the plan, but it might make the community a little more friendly to everyone involved. And is this, it sounded like a lot of these solutions were nice to haves. There was nothing that was critical that had to be done within a year or so. So my question is, is it a nice to have? And if so, is this a five-year plan, a 10-year plan, or as funding becomes available plan? And I hope it doesn't bump anything else that's critically important to the community. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Anyone else have any other questions or input on this item? Not seen in one. I'll close with public comments. So the questions were around roadway debris, how does DPW tackle that? Bridge project, excitement about the reemergence, if you could speak to that. Bus shelters, I think you used the word kiosks, but I think you meant shelters. And then the timeframe of the plan, there were additional comments about how people utilize parks or what they do when they're parking. But this, because this presentation is around transportation plan, let's stick to the questions that are related to the plan.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so the question about how does Public Works clean the bike lanes and around, and the delineators that are between the bike lanes and the travel ways? So in certain cases, like Francisco West, our street sweeper actually fits in that zone. So it is hard to get around the actual delineators that are vertical, but we can get in the cycle track itself. Yeah, this is a conversation we've been having for a while. I know other Marin jurisdictions have been having the conversation too on how can we clean the bike paths that are narrow? Right now on Second Street, we do it by hand. We go out there with our blowers and we try to remove the leaves because our street sweepers do not fit. So it is, it is an issue that we need to figure out. I know there's been conversations about, you know, different electric small sweepers. They're not cheap, so we do have to figure out whether or not that, that's a city priority to purchase one of those. But yeah, so we are exploring, we're trying to figure out whether or not there's one that we could share amongst jurisdictions. Because if we are focusing on narrow areas, we do have two large street sweepers, but we, but we don't have a small one in none of the other jurisdictions in Marin that I know of have one. But the cycle tracks that are narrow are popping up all over the place. So it is something that we need to look, continue to look at how to do it because by hand is also expensive. So as far as the bus shelters, yeah, so I think it's goals, let's see, eight and nine talk about the shelter improvements. And so Marin Transit is, Joanna mentioned when she gave an update on that, that they do have a plan to do some upgrades on different bus shelters as part of that project. And then also as part of our ATP transportation experience, we worked with Marin Transit to also talk about enhancements at some of the stations in the Canal Neighborhood. So it is something that we're looking at and making sure, like when we have projects, working with Marin Transit on how we can upgrade those shelters. TAM actually recently just approved their, their countywide transportation plan, their CTP, which, which talks about how jurisdictions should coordinate more with transit agencies on different projects. So thankfully, we already meet with them quarterly. So we're, we're trying to talk to them more and more, even the Lincoln Avenue project that I talked about that we applied for a grant. We're working with Marin Transit on how we can also improve bus shelters along there. So it's definitely one of our, I wouldn't say we had official checklist, but it's one of our checklist items is how can we help improve transit with our projects? As far as the, I guess, the maintenance of bus shelters, that, that's a hard question because it varies depending on certain shelters. Some, certain shelters we maintain, certain shelters Marin Transit maintains, some Golden Gate Transit, some nobody does, and there's not really, so it's one of those things that is on our list of things that we need to figure out who does what. And so it's just one of our coordination items. It hasn't risen to the top of the list, but it is something we need to figure out. I know on, on certain locations that do have a lot of illegal dumping, it's something that we've been working with, Corian Sustainability, on how to improve those locations. But it's also one of those ongoing conversation pieces. So as far as a five or 10-year plan, this plan came up with a, a five-year, five-year goals in the short term. And so this is, as Joanna mentioned, this is our midway, we're two and a half years in. And so we're looking at how many of these short-term things have we accomplished or we're working towards? The big plan, I mean, it, I mean, it just kind of depends on how we define that. Like the bridge project would probably be closer to the 10-year, you know, if we get, you know, we get funding and once we get through the feasibility, because that's going to take several years, just our feasibility study and environmental. going to take several years, just our feasibility study and environmental. So I guess we don't necessarily have, uh, set timeframes for everything on here, but I would say five to 10 years is probably accurate. I don't know if I missed any of the.
And then, uh, there was a comment that the bridge project went away, which I actually don't think was accurate. I think we are obtaining the fund on the feasibility, but if you could just speak to why that, I guess why it was quiet, but now we're talking about it again.
Yeah. I, you know, and I've been here five years and I, I don't recall it going away. I know that we tried for funding, it didn't get it. So it was like, I think there was some excitement and we failed to get money and then we, then we tried again and now we've got money. So I think that's, that's what I remember the last five years. It was before that, unfortunately, I don't, I don't know if it ever like went away.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. I'll bring it back to the council for additional comments. Vice Mayor, additional comments?
Uh, Mayor Kate, I just wanted to respond to one more question that came from the.
Yes, I'm sorry, City Attorney Epstein, go ahead.
Consumption of alcohol. And there was a question that was raised about, uh, that. And, um, two things on it, uh, you know, generally it's prohibited to drink in public. I can give a couple of citations for that. There's California Penal Code, Section 647, that has a provision that makes it unlawful to be intoxicated in public. But we also have a municipal code section, um, that's 8.18.030 that makes it unlawful, uh, for any person to consume an alcoholic beverage or to possess an open container of an alcoholic beverage, uh, in any, uh, city park, open space, playground, recreation area, or other public space. The exception to that is if, uh, there's a permit applied for an issue for, uh, an event, say, uh, in a public park, which happens from time to time. But, uh, appreciated the comment, but I wanted to make the, uh, clear the law that applies.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, any comments?
Just to, um, it's a great report halfway through the, the first five years. Um, very much encourage you to continue working on with Marin Transit, particularly on those bus stops. We just funded a, um, a big, um, bus stop improvement program. So, um, there, there's, there's, um, opportunities out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
Really appreciate the update. Um, I hope the same update or maybe packaged maybe differently is also shared with the community, um, through Canal Alliance and Voices and Community Action Marin, because I think the, it would be helpful for everyone to fully close that circle. And maybe share also the questions and answers that have come up through this evening as well. Thank you. Really, it's a great report.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Well, thank you Director Miller and Joanna for the presentation. There are so many parts of this that mean a lot, I think, to our community. The canal specifically is an underserved portion of our community. I think rightly was able to be offered the opportunity to create space and ask what are the priorities that you want? And I think one of the headlines that got buried that you, I think surfaced very briefly is that Public Works has had to weave those priorities into all the different mechanisms that the city has. It's not always congruent to just, hey, just make this fit. So I know a lot of it involved grant funding, a lot of it involved, um, multiple annual cycles. Uh, so thank you for weaving that in and making certain that those priorities could be met and you could set expectations that are realistic. So thank you for all the accomplishments so far and all the accomplishments to come.
Thank you. Councilmember Yuren Scalanti.
Yes, I, um, echo the sentiment, uh, from my fellow council member. Um, I, I think, um, being able to look at all the different departments in the city and, um, coming up with, uh, with this plan, and, um, I really appreciate it. It's a lot of work and how you have been able to look at the short-term, medium-term, long-term, uh, for the plan. Also, um, I, I just wanted to reiterate again, um, this is the feedback from the community when we are talking about nice to have. This is critical. We started having like a lighting, um, study thanks to also the, our community partnering with Dominican. And it's, uh, it's about safety. It's about, um, um, the canal is the, one of the most dense neighborhoods in the state of California. Lots of families walking with kids, um, not being able to maybe go out at night because there's not enough lighting. And, and all these improvements, I think that, that they are in the plan, I believe that they are really critical. It's not something that is nice to have. So I, I just wanted to mention that. I also agree with, uh, Councilmember Kurtz. It would be great to go back to the community and just keep, um, engaging with them. Uh, I know that they are always really, really, uh, grateful when there are improvements. Um, I look forward to continue seeing those improvements because I know there are still a lot of them. The bridge will be a game changer and as a council member, I would love to see it in my lifetime to happen because, um, as we know for emergencies, there's one way in, one way out. So this will open another way to connect, not to mention the accessibility to San Rafael High School, Madron, um, Montecito, and you know, anyway, we all know how important it is. Sorry, I just went there. Let's see. Um, the other part that I'm really excited is, um, as we know as well in the canal, um, is there is a lack of green spaces and we are really working to, uh, with Pickleweed Park to really improve that. There is an inequity on the, in, around climate change and they are raising up temperatures and not having enough trees where they don't provide enough shade. So it's, it's hard to keep our neighborhoods cooler that way. So I'm, I'm excited about that improvement as well. And then, um, I just wanted to mention as well, like I know there are people drinking in the cars. I have seen parents drinking out of coffee mugs in soccer games for their kids. So I know that, um, it's not seeing people drinking in cars, beers, you know, is again, this is one of the most dense areas. It's not okay, but on the other hand, it's really hard when, um, housing is a big challenge for the community and there are no spaces, um, sometimes for them to, to use them. So anyway, I just wanted to mention that, that sometimes, yes, it's a problem. Yes, we don't want that to happen, but understanding the challenges as well for the people that they live in the canal. Um, so I just wanted to mention that. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Well, you've heard the kudos for doing this great plan. I really want to thank staff. You've done a lot of work on this as well as the community. And I was reflecting on the fact that you have these government agencies, so TRAM, TAM, Transportation Authority of Marin, is a state congestion agency. So that's how government says, okay, in communities, you're going to reduce congestion through a congestion agency. That's what TAM is. And then TAM has done their countywide transportation plan. I'm your member on TAM. I was on the ad hoc committee. So really kind of coming down to the county, another government agency doing it. We have our San Rafael Bike and Ped Plan. And this plan is from the community. So I'm talking really a lot, top down, the goals of what government agencies want. And what's so amazing about this plan is it came from the community. And I actually don't know of any other jurisdiction, even Marin, actually not even in the North Bay, that was able to say, hey, what do you need in your community? Not, not what do we think you need, but what is it that you do need? And we've knit it all together from top to bottom. And I just think that is incredible. And it really is for the diligence of you and your team and making it happen as well as the community that's hung in there for the last, the two and a half years and, and they'll continue to trust us as we complete the project. So fantastic work. Uh, we appreciate the update. We look forward to hearing the update in a year or so, when there's just a few little items left. Hopefully we'll be close to closing it down. So this is a report. I would ask Councilmember Mica, if you'd like to make a motion to accept this report?
Yes, thank you so much. I, uh, I make a motion to accept the informational report, providing a status update on the 2022 Canal Community Based Transportation Plan, or CC BTP, including progress, progress toward achieving the CC BTP goals.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yuren Scalanti.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries five zero. Thank you so very much. Uh, before we adjourn the meeting, which I will be doing in honor of Mr. Joe Garberino, uh, we have open time for public expression. So this is, uh, time for the public. If there's anything that's on your mind that you'd like to share with the council, we invite you to say your name. You're not required to and what part of San Rafael? Because it's not on the agenda, we won't be able to respond, but we will be able to listen. Go ahead.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor and council members. My name is Martin Coyne. I'm a resident of San Rafael on San Rafael Hill. I, I'm wanting to just give you an advisory, um, issue here. I experienced a tree cutting service, uh, cutting down trees on an open space on a hill across from my house on Fair Drive. And there seemed to be no supervision or management or any sort of, um, control with these tree cutters. Unfortunately, I couldn't communicate with them because they didn't speak English. And I, I guess it was clear that it was for PG&E and I understand that completely. We need to clear trees out of the PG&E lines, but the, the number of trees that they were taking down was quite astonishing and it happened over a two-day period. And it wasn't until the second day that I was able to get to the name of the company, which is, um, Foretree Care of Petalum. And I called the vendor to find out what was going on and if there was any way to get a supervisor there. No one came. Anyway, the result of this is that, um, I've got no doubt we're going to have erosion control issues on that hillside because we had so many trees removed. And, um, when we had the rains in the latter part of, I think it was in December, um, there was a new, um, rainwater gully that had been created purely because these men had been running up and down the hillside without any real, um, plan or strategy in terms of cutting the trees down. So they created a new gully coming down the, the hillside, which for me, on the lower side of the hill is a, is a concern, um, because we already have a creek going down the side of the property, which works fine. So I, I just want to ask the city, is there any way that you can regulate these tree cutters coming in and cutting down trees in open spaces? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello again, Mayor, everyone. Um, again, I'm Dave Mariotini, uh, resident of Gersl Park. So on a second, my intention tonight was to come, um, I have some, um, signatures that I've gotten from neighbors in Gersl Park, um, that I wanted to add to some that I, I gave to you, um, a week ago, Mayor. Um, and this is in regards to Gersl Park. I guess between Thanksgiving and Christmas, we had a camper in the park, um, who, um, and we learned, I know this is a challenging issue and I know that, um, you guys are doing a lot and it's, it's not easy as far as the homelessness issue. In a minute, I'm going to do my best to just say that, um, I applaud everything that we're doing as a city. Uh, I know it's not easy. We're all sensitive in Gersl Park, but the reason that I'm here right now is because we were told that, um, it was okay to camp overnight in Gersl Park. And our fear as residents was that, to see, um, someone camping in the park, we thought this is not okay. Now I've realized this city is going to go broke if we have to defend more legal action, federally, county, statewide, right? We, I understand, we don't have a, an open checkbook that we can just continue to have our attorneys defend these lawsuits. My last 20 seconds, um, I just want to make sure that, um, I, I got 31 neighbors along with the help of my neighbors. We got 31 signatures, um, from people just to say we'd like to kindly and respectfully ask the city of San Rafael to add Gersl Park to the list of existing parks that don't allow overnight camping. And Mayor Kate Collin, I want to thank you. You've already emailed me. You're amazing at emailing, which is phenomenal. Carrie Phillips was okay.
You can give it to the city clerk. Thank you. Anyone else have any comments this evening?
I'm not going to be as nice as he was. My name is Dr. Cherry Levin. I live in Glenwood. I've been in Glenwood since 1983. I have a question for the council, but I've been sitting here for two hours and I think you might not answer me. Does ordinance 2040 allow homeless people sleeping in our city parks?
So you can use your time. We cannot respond to anything that's not publicly noticed on the agenda, but I can tell you, if you email the city staff at nhomelessness.org, and actually the city clerk or city manager can write it down, they can respond, staff can respond, but we can't respond in this. As part of the Brown Act, we can get into conversation about items not on the agenda.
You can't say yes or no.
Correct. But there's staff that you can email right now, and I bet in the next couple of days, they would respond to your email.
Well, you've already responded to mine.
Yes.
I'm not going away. I think we can do a better job. I'm a fully trained folklorist. I did my folklore training at UC Berkeley with Alan Dundas. And what this is doing, it's setting up contested terrain in our city parks. Children that go to the parks and homeless people are there will be afraid, they'll be frightened. You don't want to do that. The residents are going to be angry. The homeless people are stigmatized. They are, help me with words here. They, they've been, they've been told they're invisible. They want people, people want them to go away. We can do better. We can build a camp compassion. We don't have to go and spend thousands and thousands, $7.9 on a project home key. We can get the people involved in building their own community. And we've got two mayors of Camp Compassion sitting right here behind me. We can do better. We can be on national television. We might not get the Amish to help us like they went to North Carolina, but we can get a place built for homeless people that satisfies everyone's needs and doesn't break the bank. But ordinance 2040 must be repealed. It is not going to work.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Mayor Kate and City Council. I'm Richard Olive and I live in Terre Linda. So stunning news last week, an arbitrator ruled that a San Rafael policeman fired for assaulting a resident should reinstated to his job. Something is seriously wrong with the system that would allow Brandon Nail to be given a gun and a nightstick and returned to our streets. Video evidence of the beating, uh, Mr. Nail gave Jimenez Lopez in 2022 demonstrates the action of a thug. Mr. Nail punched Mr. Lopez in the face, breaking his nose and causing a concussion and a torn labrum in his shoulder when Mr. Lopez was forced to the ground. Mr. Nail is heard on the audio laughing and boasting to other officers about his action. In his decision, arbitrator Daniel Saleh said San Rafael Police Chief David Spiller fired Mr. Nail to appease the demands of community protesters who had reached, who had reacted to a clear case of police brutality. While officers need to be supervised, the arbitrator said, they do not need to be second guessed. Who else but the police department should be reviewing how its officers interact with the community? City manager Christine Alilovich said the city will abide by the decision, but quote, "The, the incident is not reflective of the values of our organization." As a member of this community, I suggest the incident is not reflected of our values either. The city's collective bargaining agreement with the San Rafael Police Association must be amended to ensure that arbitrators cannot return to our streets, police officers who are clear menaces to community safety and financial viability.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Anyone else have any public comment before we adjourn?
My name is Mark Allen. I'm sorry, let me give you this. Today, as I stand here, the city's regulations allow homeless to camp in virtually unlimited density, that's 10 feet between campsites, in 19 of the 21 parks in San Rafael. The situation has been confirmed on the homeless FAQ page on the San Rafael City website, where the text in the camping ordinance section, point six reads. The city has not taken any action to specifically prohibit camping at Peacock Gap Park. Camping on public property is permitted throughout the city and is regulated by SRMC 19.50. That's also title 19.50. As documented in ordinance 2040, which has been approved and is now in effect, this is an act of such magnitude, we are talking about approving homeless camping. an act of such magnitude, we are talking about approving homeless camping in nearly every park in the city. That it cannot just have been a random act by the city council and has to be part of a greater plan. In the spirit of openness and honesty, can you tell the residents of San Rafael what the city's overall plan is? One that requires giving permission to homeless people to camp in virtually every park in the city and not just one or two. These parks are treasured places to the community, and the presence of homeless campers on them is likely to severely limit the use of these parks by everyday citizens and raise all sorts of concerns about crime, violence, fire hazards, with the resulting loss of insurance, environmental damage, likely significant impact, negative impact to home values, et cetera.
If you could finish your comments.
Sure. What is the city's plan that it requires this to occur in 19 of 20, 21 parks in San Rafael? And isn't this an excessive risk and burden on the 66,000 city residents as a whole?
Thank you.
Especially given the comparatively low homeless population that would benefit, given as 326 on the PIT report.
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Allen, for your participation on the homeless working group. Because those discussions that we're having that you're bringing up, that's the community public forum, so input from the community in addition to the input we get this evening. So thank you for serving on that community and that committee, because that will be important as the city looks to either evolve or change any of our strategies.
It's my pleasure to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything else?
Good evening. My name is Alina, my name is Alina Bermudez. I live in Glen. Thank you all for being here because we all put our time. Uh, my concern is ordinance 2040 as well. I think I'm going to be less than one minute. I consider this situation a public health and safety issue. And having, preventing parking, uh, camping in the parks will maintain a clean and safe environment for everyone. How is the public health department involved in the decision-making? That is one of my concerns. My second concern is if, if, if camping is allowed uh, in the parks, how is the city going to protect the community and ensure that the parks remain accessible for recreational use? And that's all I have to say. Thank you. I will continue to follow this.
Yeah, thank you for your comment. And the homeless working group that Mr. Allen is a part of, those meetings are open to the public. So again, your input is valued here as well as in that form.
I was told that the ordinance, I know you cannot answer me.
Right.
But I was told that the ordinance is already almost there, passed. So that's why I wanted to raise my concerns.
So by going there, they can actually give you the information that you're seeking about how ordinances are passed in the city council and how that works, because it is an important topic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello? The fire and the police departments are understaffed. Instead of our tax money being spent on fire and crime prevention, it is spent on special interests of the city officials, such as allowing tents to be put throughout residential neighborhoods. This is a hazard for these residential communities. We have lost retail, commercial, and many tax-paying residents due to poor city planning, putting high-density housing in place with no more water, no more water resources. This is crazy. Increased reservoirs is what we need. How are you going to put out fires with no water? We haven't put any, all buildings should be, should, you should increase the water resources for any building that we have in San Rafael. San Rafael crime has increased greatly in the last few years. These, the, a lot of the tent campers start fires. They have been banned from surrounding communities. Uh, the last was a good-sized fire up in Novato. They banned them because of that. And unsanitary conditions. Many campers in these camps are, have criminal records. They're sex offenders, they're drug addicts. These people, they have um, mental disorders. These people need, need help. They don't need to be enabled by what the city is handing out to them. There's only 100 feet between tents and children's playpark areas in parks, 100 feet. This is, um, it's, it's just unsafe. Uh, there are plenty of, of areas that, that these people can camp. They don't need to camp in safe residential communities.
Thank you. If you could finish your comments.
There is a fire out at Peacock Gap. The people that live out there have no way out. There'll be lives lost.
Thank you for your comments.
Hey, Robbie Poulson, and I just wanted to come out and take a different perspective in terms of, you know, I think the camping ordinance is too restrictive. But I, at the same time, I want to acknowledge that while there are disagreements, the truth is that people need to remember that the reason that, one of the main reasons that Judge Chen granted the preliminary injunction in the Boyd case had to do with the lead plaintiff, who was a victim of domestic violence, who was working while she was living on the Mahone Creek path, who had been kicked out and just had a period of several months where she was, didn't have a place to stay. And the, the thing that could be said about San Rafael's camping ordinance is that women, victims of domestic violence who experience a lot of threats of violence have at least some kind of stable place to be while they get into housing and shelter. Because we know there are no Section 8 vouchers currently available in the county, Marin. There's no housing right now. We're waiting for the next discharge. All the shelters are full. And, you know, the city of Novato and the city of Fairfax, they've been taking a, a, making poor decisions, and they're going to be wasting um, their city's resources enforcing, putting people's lives in danger. So having a place for, that people can be, acknowledging that people have a right to be safe, have a place to store food, water, bedding, clothes, that's, that's very reasonable. Uh, and I think that um, continuing to acknowledge that is important. I think there's a lot of misinformation being spread right now online. And so I'm, I want to be available also to people listening. We're happy to talk and share information because I think people are getting the, the wrong idea of uh, of what's going on. And frankly, I think San Rafael is uh, doing better than Novato and Fairfax. So thank you.
Any other public comment this evening? Welcome.
Hello, my name is Sarah McAvoy, and I just want to speak um, on the homeless issue as well. I was homeless on the streets of San Rafael um, just over eight years ago. And it was a time where um, you couldn't put a tent up anywhere. And it was, as soon as the sun went down, it was a terrifying time. Like it was, it was not, um, there was nowhere where I could go to feel safe. And I understand that the community wants to be able to use public parks, but um, I think the safety of the unhoused individuals who are at the lowest of the low points in their lives, um, who are the most vulnerable people in the community, um, I think they deserve to have a safe, you know, place where they can lay their head down. And I just want to applaud um, the city of San Rafael for um, taking this, taking the position that they have and um, uh, not following suit with Fairfax and Novato in their criminalization of homelessness. Um, I think it's, their, their decisions are extremely inhumane and outright disgusting. And I, it's a very sensitive issue. And so I just want to stand up here in support of San Rafael and the decision you've made to allow camping um, in various parks.
Thank you for your comments. Mm-hmm, I think it's on. If not, you can take it off. Let me see, is it on? Oh wait, hold on, hold on one second.
Hello. So those signs out there, they really mean something. Treat people how you want to be treated. The people that live on the streets, if people live on the streets, everyone should live on the streets. If everyone, if everyone lives in a house, everyone should live in a house. You have to be very kind to everyone and treat people like how you want to be treated because it's not fair how to be treated meanly because that's not nice. And you have to be kind.
Thank you. Best public comment we've had. Well said. Anybody else?
Yeah, Jason from Gerstle Park. I'm not sure how I can follow that comment. It was very well said. I do want to, wow, how quickly things can change. I do want to uh, I do want to uh, talk about the ordinance today and, and my support for it. Um, for, for the city allowing um, people to publicly camp on, you know, certain public areas. And um, and as, you know, the humane, morally right thing to do. Um, we all know how limited the shelter space is and how there's a lack of availability for housing. Novato and Fairfax have chosen to go down a dark path by uh, criminalizing homelessness. And um, I urge the city not to go down that path. Um, I like the direction that the city is going right now with the sanctioned camp and then, you know, you know, coming up with some tiny homes. My, my thought about that is um, once you get those tiny homes, if you lose that camp, there's 50 people that would be off the street and out of the public's eye. And so I, I would like to see as people transition into the tiny homes to keep the camp open and keep that, that kind of two-step stepping stone direction. And that would help take pressure off uh, public, uh, camping on public space. I think that would be, if you guys could swing it and um, come up with the, the funds to, to, to support both, I think you are really doing something special if you could get that done. And that's what I have to say for now, but uh, thank you for taking my time, my comment.
Um, my name is Rosie Brecky, and I've lived in um, East San Rafael for decades. And um, and so I'm here about ordinance 2040. And uh, a lot of my concerns have to do with how your details of monitoring registered sex offenders. The city's posts the numbers in each, in each city on a daily basis. And days ago, Novato reported 32 registered sex offenders, San Rafael 35. And Richmond, on the Richmond side of the Richmond-San Rafael Bridge, reported 232 registered sex offenders. They're, they're statistically, it's easy for them to be embedded anonymously within homeless encampments and for the parole system to not be able to keep track of them. So my question is to the city council and the mayor, how are you going to vet them? Are you going to vet them? How are you going to keep track of them? What about the setbacks have been reduced in the parks from 100 feet between um, the camps and children in the playground? It should be 2,000 if they're registered sex offenders. So how are you planning to implement the, integrating registered sex offenders in a group? Or will you know the difference? So my concern is mostly about that. There are many other issues. But um, I do have some questions um, for the mayor and the, and the city. You, you gave the green light to use alcohol and substance in, in their tents. Who will monitor alcohol and drug abuse in the campers' tents, often leading to rape and assault? So the questions, that leads me to the questions of where will you be when a homeless repeat registered sex offender violently assaults and rapes a child?
If you, if you could, if you could complete your comments for two minutes. You, you have two minutes and your two minutes is up, so.
Could I finish the sentence?
Finish the sentence, that would be great.
So, so um, um, where will you be when a frantic mother repeatedly calls rape crisis and suicide hotline? Where will you be when a family and a victim spend a lifetime trying to heal a memory and physicality from an assault?
Okay, thank you. So with, with all the, the questions, so you can email the council.
One more question. What would you, what if it was your child?
So there's a great email, which is worth sharing, which is nhomelessness@cityofsanralph.org. So, okay, so you can also ask them your questions. Is there any other public comment this evening? Okay, great. Is there any other public comment this evening before we adjourn?
Oh, good morning. I'm Michael Walford. I am the president of the Peacock Gap Homeowners Association. We have uh, heard some concerns, but I'm here to acknowledge the work that you have done. I have um, both familiar with what used to be the Mahone Creek and what is uh, the tent development by the city to house people. And we have to draw a line between humanity like that. And clearly, anyone who's driven down Anderson Drive understands that there's some serious problems that do pose a danger. And I'd also like to acknowledge the fact that there's a lot of talk about homeless tents in parks, but that is a problem that doesn't quite exist. One camp in Gerstle Park, zero camps in Peacock Gap. And I also would like to acknowledge that homelessness is down, crime is down. So thank you for doing, doing this hard work. There's no solution. It's a worldwide, countrywide, statewide problem. And we don't want it in our backyard. That's true. It's not very nice. But we want humanity in our backyard, and that's true. We'll have to figure that all out together. Um, I do have one other point. The others, another speaker earlier mentioned uh, the concerns. I take a lot of inbound comments from my 447 homeowner constituents. A lot of it's about the homelessness. A lot of it is about the San Rafael Police Department. And the reinstatement of Brandon Nail, or the possibility of that is being met with outrage, disappointment, and fear. Because if that man gets a badge and a gun, we are in trouble. But more importantly, I'd like to speak on behalf of the good police officers. I interviewed Diana Bishop after George Floyd that took a piece on, you know, a piece of that on CNN, Lieutenant Roy. There are um, a lot of people that make a big difference. Lynn Murphy, Trevor Carney, these are, and I, I don't know a lot of cops, I just know a lot of good cops.
If you could close your comment.
If I could clip my comment. I think a few years ago, I spoke to somebody with the city government. They said, why do you think we need a police advisory committee? The answer is the police union. The police union is only protecting bad cops. That puts the good cops into, into danger. I keep, how can, this isn't me, this is people.
So if you could finish your comments.
Thank you.
Mr. Walford.
I think I've made uh, uh, our points. So, but thank you all.
Thank you. Any other public comment this evening? Not seeing any. I'm going to close the public comment. And before I adjourn tonight, we will adjourn in honor of the extraordinary life and legacy of Joe Garberino. He was a visionary leader who transformed how we think about waste and recycling. He was a longtime resident and a driving force behind Marin Sanitary Service. Joe built his groundbreaking initiatives and innovative solutions right here in San Rafael, right here in our community. He has made San Rafael a model for environmental stewardship that we continue to uphold. His creation of the nation's first, the nation's first curbside recycling program reshaped the industry and inspired countless others to follow his lead. But beyond these incredible, long-lasting professional accomplishments, Joe was a beloved community leader. He was a proud supporter of veterans and a dedicated advocate for our environment. I know many of you in this room and listening in had both personal and professional relationships with Joe, myself included. And we will all miss this. with Joe, myself included. And we will all miss this extraordinary human being. We extend our heartfelt condolences to his family. And with all the gratitude that he gave to our city and beyond, I adjourn tonight's meeting in his honor.